Good evening. This meeting of the GALT Joint Union Elementary School District Board of Education is now called to order. Will everyone please stand and join me in the flag?
Salute pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and there is no report coming out of the closed session. So we will now move on to item D, which is Board Meeting Protocol. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. So our session tonight is being recorded. Our meeting is open to the public, and our meeting is being broadcast live through Zoom teleconference. For public comment, public comments are three minutes per agenda item. The board shall limit the total time for public comment for each agenda item to 20 minutes. With board consent, the board president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public comment. To make a public comment via Zoom teleconference, notify board meeting assistant through the chat box feature in Zoom, or by using the raised hand feature in Zoom during the agenda item to be addressed. You'll be identified by your display name in Zoom when called upon to speak. To make public comment in person, please complete a public comment form indicating the item that you would like to address and give that to Ms. Bach, our board meeting assistant. And email public comments can be emailed to the superintendent 24 hours before the board meeting, and they'll be posted to the GALT website with the agenda. Public comment email is 450 words. We have not received any written public comments for tonight. Board vote and connectivity. Each motion will be followed by a roll call vote for the action items, and should a board member attend the meeting remotely and lose connectivity by teleconference or phone, the meeting will be delayed by five minutes. We do not have a board member that is with us via Zoom. Trustee Wes the Cable is not here tonight. Our regular board meetings will be adjourned by 10:30 PM.
All right. Thank you very much. Now on to the next item E, which is Reports. Superintendent?
All right. Thank you. I wanted to start tonight. It is not an agenda item for superintendent's reports, but I did want to start tonight by just saying that our thoughts and our prayers are with the Hernandez family. The Hernandez family lost their daughter last week. She's a student in our school district. And just really thank you to the community of GALT, staff, families, parents, community members, some people that we don't even know even, have just been very, very generous in supporting the family. We met with the family just this week, and they just, they said it over and over how thankful they were. Lots of gratitude. They said they felt the love in the community, just were overjoyed by the response to everybody reaching out and helping them. Of course, very sad, very, very sad and difficult time for them, but they feel, they feel the love, and they mentioned that numerous times with us, and we met with them this week. So just thoughts and prayers out there, just can't, the worst imaginable thing for a parent to ever have to deal with.
Thank you.
So the reports that are in our, our school safety, I wanted to start with that. A small team of us, a couple of our administrators and myself attended the 2022 School Safety Symposium that was in Sacramento. This was last Friday, and I just wanted to share a few highlights from that training. It was very good training, very well attended, lots of police officers, law enforcement, FBI. The gym was full at Jesuit High School in Sacramento. Some of the takeaways or the highlights that I wanted to talk about, while it, well, how horrific it is, and we hear them in the media and the news and that when it happens, they reminded us that out of the attacks that we see in the public, only 20% of the attacks are on schools. Most of the attacks, over 80%, are in the community, in the public grocery stores, you know, events where you see shopping malls and things like that. And so they said 20% is what, and they're going back from Columbine over the last 20 years. They're taking to look at how much is impacting schools. They really said we need to have a strong partnership with law enforcement, and I feel that we have a very strong relationship with our GALT PD. They talked a lot about prevention, probably almost two hours of the training was on prevention. Some of the things that they talked about, the school-wide prevention strategies, you have to have building trusting relationships on your campus, you have to have a school climate that determines if students will speak up, or staff, or parents will speak up when they hear or see something that might not be right. You need to have adults visible and establish presence in your school. You have to minimize tolerance for bullying. You have to encourage nonviolent ways for students to resolve conflict. Provide campus safety-related training, make sure your gates and your doors are locked, and we need to wear name badges. And so we've talked about that with administrators, that we all need to be better about wearing our, our name badges, myself included. So really, when we debriefed with our admin team this last week about some of the findings and just continue to work on with our prevention strategies, with our social workers, our counselors, our school resource officers. Something else that I wanted to highlight related to safety is that the GALT PD is they're still working on our site assessments. We heard at the safety symposium that it's very important to have those in place. I know they have finished Greer in Valley Oaks. Don't have the reports yet back from them, but they're still working on those, hopefully within the next month or so. We also have purchased through our alarm company what you call duress or panic buttons. We're hoping to have them, the material that the parts should be in in December. Hopefully installation will be able to start in January, but we'll have three to four duress buttons at each school site, one in the office for sure, probably one in the multipurpose rooms, but you would be able to push that button in an emergency, and it goes straight to the alarm system that would call PD. So if somebody were to come in the office and you didn't have time to pick up the phone, you would be able to push this button, or if something in the cafeteria, you couldn't reach a phone. We'll figure out ranges and work with administrators and law enforcement on the best location to put them on campus, but we have already purchased that, and we're waiting for the materials. So that's something that has come up in collaboration with the GALT PD too, and talking about how we make our offices more secure and things like that. So that was one of the outcomes of that. So just want to let you know that that is in work.
Okay, yeah, because I was going to bring up, I know that there's, it's rare, but there are the instances and times of the, like, non-custodial parent, and you know, our offices are open, and they can just, like, come right in, and you know, it can be terrifying for the office staff. So I was going to ask what kind of protocols, because I know, you know, when we put up all the fences and all those security measures, a lot of, you know, there was, you know, it taught, you know, our schools look like prisons, but you know what, to me, it's the safety, and these are, you know, things, anyone, you know, like, we had, I think it was Liberty went on lockdown because it's in a neighborhood, and we don't know where that person is headed to, you know, they could be going on the campus. We don't know, we would hope they wouldn't. You know, so having the gates and those safety precautions are fabulous, but I know our offices are open, they can just walk on in, so that's nice to know about the panic buttons. Because it's very rare, but it does happen.
Right.
So that's good.
And then to say there is somebody that they're, you know, having trouble with in the office, you know, the button will be in a place where the person wouldn't even necessarily see a staff never push it, know that law enforcement is now being called.
Kind of like convenience stores that have, you know.
Kind of like, almost like the bank teller, the button underneath the desk type thing.
Yeah, no, that's good, instead of having to, like.
Pick up the phone, and they hear a call, the police, yeah.
Yeah, or even having to lock our doors and having, you know, the intercom, you know, to come in type thing.
And we have talked about that, we've talked about it in our superintendent meetings with the county, and just the pros and cons to that. No other school district at this time is securing their office, they're not keeping their offices locked during the day. More districts are starting to go to security fencing. Thankfully, we have that at all of our schools, and more schools are, and districts are moving towards that, but there's still a lot of schools in our area and that don't have fencing yet too, and so we're fortunate.
Seems that we have a good camera system too.
We do, we do, we really have great camera systems. Thank you, man, and our tech team. Yes, we do, and we continue to upgrade and increase cameras every year as needed. An update on that, and then a next report, I agree for you, is an enrollment update. September usually kind of stabilizes for enrollment, so I just wanted to let you know where we're at. We are still up, thankfully, we are up 36 students compared to the end of last school year, we have 3,356 students. Definitely not where we were at in 2018 with 30, over 3,600 students, but at least we're still trending in the right, in the right direction. So that's, that's good to see. And the breakdowns for you, if you would like to know by grade level, I won't bring this to the, to the board again as a report unless we see something drastically changed, but I thought was important to show you August and September, because those are the months that we have some movement, kids coming in, kids leaving, but we think that's probably about where we'll, we'll be for the school year.
That is positive news.
Was the eighth grade class always kind of small?
It has been smaller the last few years. This year, the seventh grade class is a little bit bigger, so that's good. And I think our kinder number should be higher next year because of how many students we have in TK, so hopefully that trend will continue to push our kinder numbers up, so hopefully next year we'll have just as many TKs that start, because that's where our numbers really have been low, is kinder.
And Casey, just to kind of elaborate on that, I know when I started on the board in 2011, we were in the recession, and people weren't having kids, like, and so if you think about it, those kids now would be in middle school.
But I think there's been a continual declining birth rate for six years, making nationals, so it could be just lower now than it was six years ago.
And I think the recession was just, people just, I don't know. Doing their own thing, having kids later in life.
And fewer.
Yeah. Ken works, Ken Reynolds with Schoolworks is getting ready in the month of October. He will start our update of our demographic study, and so we'll probably, I would think probably by December maybe, we'll be bringing that to the board, and that's when he updates us on birth rate, what his projections are for enrollment the next few years based on the new housing and things like that. So it's our, it's our year to redo that.
Yeah, too, I'm getting new laws and new housing around, so we'll see.
And that is goal area one.
So then, yeah, we go ahead and move on down to El Capo two then, the iSmart parent training in McCaffrey.
Donna, would you like to highlight that?
I would, I'm excited that McCaffrey Middle School just really, they took the initiative, and they got started quickly, and they were in contact with the Sac County District Attorney's Office, so they're offering the iSmart training that we offered to our, to our families last spring. It'll be Thursday, this, actually, it'll be tomorrow from six to seven in the McCaffrey Middle School cafeteria, and we're excited, and they're still working on the Spanish presentation, there will be one. I met with our social workers and counselors two weeks ago, and the elementary social workers and the counselors are, they're contacting, they're in the process of setting up dates at each of their school sites, and they are working right now on the presentation for the fourth, fifth, and sixth graders. It will be, they, they're going to do it like they did last year, either in each individual class, or maybe in the multipurpose room. The, the presentation will be modified, of course, for the fourth and fifth graders, will be a little bit different than the, than the one that they showed the seventh and eighth graders. Also this year, I think last year Lake Canyon actually offered a separate parent presentation for Lake Canyon families, and the social workers, the outreach said that they'd like to do that on individual school campuses this year, so they'll be working on doing some student, parent presentations. We're hoping we get a better turnout, and it's later in the evening, so maybe more, you know, allow more families to come. So excited, and they're booked too, by the way, Sac County, the attorney's office is booked, they said, you know, I've been in the email stream, and so many districts are reaching out to them.
And the boards don't need to sign up or anything, they just show up?
Nope, they just show up.
Okay. And then the Spanish presentation, is it going to be in the BFLC, or do we know the location?
No, they haven't, they don't have a date yet, they're looking for it. They're still working on it, they're looking for an interpreter.
So that will be tomorrow, but we'll set that up, and then we'll send out an announcement when that's.
Yes, we will, absolutely. Yeah, this is just the English presentation, but I like where it said raffle prizes available. I think for a raffle prize, you have to win it, but. Yeah, I'm really hopeful that we'll get some parents, and you know what, there's, there have been, all sites have already had some issues and some, you know, student matters with social media already this year, so it's a good time.
The high school's going to jump on board, because there's been a lot of social media issues, especially at the high school age, and I think this would be a great presentation.
Oh, I think.
I might send this to.
So every single fourth, fifth, and sixth grader, or seventh and eighth grader, every student will, will be watching, having, seeing this presentation.
Love it. I'm just about to, if I have time, I'm going to pick up a kid.
We'll bring back to you when the, the school, school site presentations are for elementary.
Thank you. That's all, yeah, that's all for reports. So we'll go ahead and move on to item F, Routine Matters, New Business. First item is 212.346, and that's approval of the consent calendar. So what items of note are in the consent calendar?
I would like to highlight our Human Resources Consent Calendar. It is two pages. We have hired 33 new staff members.
Wow.
Most of that's classified staff members, but our HR department has been very, very busy, and it's amazing, it's definitely needed, but yeah, 30, 33 new staff members. And then I also would like to highlight a donation for Valley Oaks. Manuel Versiaga donated five cases of hand sanitizer valued at $360 for school site use.
I think this is the most new hires we've seen in a while.
I think so too, the most, yes, and we're not, we're not done. We're not done.
I've never seen that, I know of.
No.
Just out of curiosity, Manuel Versiaga, is he a local business person, or does?
You know, I don't know, good question. I'm quite, do you know?
I don't know.
I'm not sure.
I mean, I'd certainly like to recognize him if he's, if he's a local business owner.
Yeah. We can find out, I don't know if, I know we have an administrator from Valley Oaks online, if they, if they know, if they want to let us know, but we can look into that.
Yeah, I mean, I'd certainly like to thank her, and.
Yeah, that's nice.
Yeah. Okay.
And we do send thank you letters to all our, everyone who donates, we go send a thank you letter, we always do that, but we'll find out if it's a business or a parent, yeah.
Yeah, because either way, that's great. Whatever we can do to say thank you, that would be awesome. Okay, anything else from the consent calendar then?
A lot of routine master or annual master contracts.
That's all of that? Any question or comment on that? Are you all good? Okay. And if that's the case, do I have a motion to approve item 212.346, the consent calendar?
I make the motion to approve item 212.346.
Thank you, Grace. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Casey.
Thank you, I have a motion from Grace Mossen to approve item number 212346, the consent calendar, seconded by Casey Raboy. Tom Silva?
Aye.
Tracy Skinner?
Aye.
Thank you, the motion passes 4-0.
Now we're on to item, agenda item 212.348, and that is board consideration of student expulsion case number 21/22-04. This is an action item, so do I have a motion to approve item 212.348?
I'll make the motion to approve item 212.348.
Thank you, Tracy, I will second this motion.
Thank you, I have a motion from Tracy Skinner to approve item number 212348, seconded by Tom Silva. Grace Mossen?
Aye.
Casey Raboy?
Aye.
Thank you, the motion passes 4-0.
All right, next item on the agenda is 212.349, and that is board consideration to nominate California School Boards Association, CSBA, directors at large, Asian, Pacific Islander, and Hispanic.
Yes, we brought this to the board last month, and at that time, there was not a recommendation, so the board asked us to maybe bring it back the following month to see if that has changed. If you have somebody that you would like to nominate for director-at-large, Asian Pacific Islander and Hispanic, or CSBA?
I do not personally have anybody that I can recommend for that, I don't know about, I don't know about the board members. So then do we just not take action on this item, or what's?
Right, we just, we don't have, you know, don't need to take action.
There's no motion?
There's no motion.
We can just move on to the next item, so this item is not acted on. Okay. Okay, next item on the agenda is item number 212.350, and that is board consideration of approval of resolution number one, Authorization to Adopt California Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act Procedures and Related Items, CUPCA, and Related Board Policy and Administrative Regulation 3311.1, Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Procedures. So refresh our memories, I've talked about this before, the reason why we want to do this.
So this is, this helps us with the competitive bidding process for construction projects. It provides public agencies more leeway in the execution of the project, it speeds up the award process, reduces the time, effort, and expenses associated with finding a contractor to do smaller projects. The larger projects, anything over $200,000, you still have to follow the competitive bidding process, but we have smaller projects, painting projects, electrical projects, plumbing, things like that, that oftentimes go over the bid limit, which is around $97,000, I think now. We have a couple quotes for a few projects right now that are around $125,000 or $150,000 that we've just held off on. We would like to, we would like to ask for board approval of this, we would file the resolution with the state controller to get on, be officially on a CUPCA list. There's still a process that we have to follow to make sure that contractors are pre-qualified and they have the right license, they have the right insurance, and we would definitely follow all of that. This would help us out, especially right now, it is so hard to find contractors, everyone's so busy, and I think just the workforce is still not quite up to where it used to be prior to COVID, and so we are struggling to find people in certain areas to get projects done, so this would help us if we, that was one less step if we don't have to go out to bid.
That was going to be my question, is if you still had to go up to bid, you know, normally it's X amount, even if it's less, you still have to bid for like the three bids, and you normally go with the lowest, or those are familiar with, but this takes away the bidding process?
It would, if it's under $200,000, if the job is over 200, then you still have to get your quotes, advertise, job logs, usually take the lowest bid, things like that.
So then is there potential savings with this, because we're really reducing administrative costs?
Yeah, every time we, we run an ad in the paper, there's a cost there, there's administrative fees, there's paperwork, there's, there's time, there's site blocks, there's, yeah, definitely.
And then on the list, like, because I'm guessing there's, there's a list of vendors, correct? And then, but would you still vet them?
Yes, we have a pre-qualification process, we have a checklist of things they have to submit to us, they have to submit their financials, their bond information, insurance, license, workman comp information, there's, there's quite a bit that you have to submit to be pre-qualified, and we keep a pre-qualified list.
Oh, perfect, okay. Yeah, it just takes away that bidding process.
Makes sense, yeah. Any other questions, comments? All right, if not, then I'll move to approve item 212.350. Do I have a second? Can you give me a second? Go ahead, do it, a second.
Thank you, I have a motion from Tom Silva to approve item number 212350, seconded by Grace Mossen. Tracy Skinner?
Aye.
Casey Raboy?
Aye.
Thank you, the motion passes 4-0.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is item number 212.351, this is a public hearing regarding the sufficiency of instructional materials and determination through a resolution whether each student has sufficient textbooks and instructional materials pursuant to Education Code 60119, so this public hearing is now open.
Thank you.
Leo?
So this is a process that we follow every year around this time, and as mentioned, Education Code 60119 specifies that the Board of Education should hold a public hearing and shall determine through a resolution that each pupil, including each English learner in each school in the district, has sufficient textbooks or instructional materials or both in each subject area. That includes English Language Arts, Mathematics, History, Social Science, and Science that are consistent with the content and cycles of the curricular framework adopted by the California State Board of Education. So attached, you have the public notice that was posted at each school, including our district office, and as Tom already mentioned, this is a public hearing. Do we have anyone?
There are no requests for public comment.
Okay. Well then, if that's the case, we will close the public hearing, and we will move on to the next agenda item. And that agenda item is item 212.352, and this is board consideration of approval of resolution number four, and that is the GALT Joint Union Elementary School District Resolution Regarding Sufficiency of Instructional Materials.
Thank you, so this item follows the public hearing, again, under the Education Code 60119. The board shall make a determination through a resolution that is attached, whether each pupil, including each English learner in each school in the district, has sufficient textbooks or instructional materials in each area, in each core area as mentioned before. Attached, you have a resolution, and you also have the inventory for instructional materials, and we are asking for board.
So I'm just curious, then, the process here, so when a publisher like Benchmark comes up with an item like Benchmark Advance, is there a certification process whereby the state of California validates that, that this item meets California standards?
Yes.
Okay, so before we even adopt them, we know that they're appropriate for California schools?
Yes, we ensure that any materials that we have in the classroom are aligned to the California standards for each core area.
Okay.
So with the resolution, why? What's the next step with the vote?
Oh, just a vote on resolution number four regarding sufficiency of instructional materials. We need to take action on the resolution.
Right, yeah, it's still an action item. Yeah, that's a, is there any other questions or concerns about this item?
No, but I do have a question. And it doesn't really have anything to do with, as far as the core materials that are on here, but it does say instructional materials, which to me would be Chromebooks. And I know that back when we got Ways to the Top, Chromebooks, you know, District One, which is fabulous. And I'm just wondering, is this going to be an ongoing thing? Like, are we going to be able to continue having Chromebooks futureistically for all students?
That's a good question, because a lot of those are online.
So I just want to make sure that we're going to be able to continue with the technology that we have so far for students.
And I'm going to turn that over to Lois, and then possibly to Maureen.
Yeah, no, definitely. We have been refreshing Chromebooks every year, and we will continue. We have to keep it in the budget to refresh Chromebooks and laptops as well for staff. So, so we do. I know we just, we just talked, we're ready to order about, what, 500 more?
1,200.
1,200. Yeah. I would say the average life expectancy for a Chromebook right now, what is it, about five, six years? And then we have, yeah, we have trouble with them updating.
That's not standard with laptops and everything, it just goes.
Yeah.
It's an old boy after five or six years.
It's been nice having the one-time funds and extra funds come in to be able to purchase these things like this. But we have to make sure that even once these funds are gone, we have it built into the regular general budget, because we, every year, we're going to have to replace technology.
Right, and most materials right now are online.
So, yeah. And our assessments are online.
So that brings up a good point, then. So then, is there any mention in the Ed Code six oh one one nine addressing technology, computers?
I think it fits into instructional materials, because for our purposes, technology is part of our instructional materials.
Yeah, that's kind of how I see it.
So it's not like explicit, like, it just falls into that general area of instructional materials?
Are there some books that are only online? Amplify at McCaffrey?
Yeah, I figured McCaffrey, and then any other books that are?
Everything right now is in digital form. And some teachers opt to use the hard copy. Some will give a hard copy to the children, some children prefer the online student book. So it's, it's optional, but all of our materials are.
Yeah, because I haven't seen any books.
No, not for Amplify, unless the student requests it, or unless the teacher feels that in whatever lesson unit they're in, that a hard copy would be more beneficial to the children. But seventh and eighth grade ELA Amplify is online.
It doesn't seem like I see books, though, like I used to some years ago. I see books, high school, I know there's books, but even then, it's just dust in my house.
I think the nice thing about the online version is then you always have the updated version versus you need to purchase new textbooks every time they have a new edition come out.
And many of our teachers, as you probably know, use Google Classroom. So a lot of the work is pushed through Google Classroom. So you probably won't see textbooks going out.
Good for backpacks.
And we are pulling out more of our assessments online this year, too. And you have to have the technology to take the state assessment that's online. So there's really no way around it, you have to have this for school, for students.
I think parents can request as well textbooks to go home, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so students or parents, if they want textbooks.
All right, any more discussion? Then, do I have a motion to approve item two one two point three five two?
I'll make the motion to approve two one two point three five two.
Thank you, Tracy. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Casey.
Thank you. I have a motion from Tracy Skinner to approve item number two one two three five two, seconded by Casey Raboy. Thomas Silva.
Aye.
Grace Mossen.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries four zero.
Thank you.
All right, next on to item two one two point three five three, and that is board consideration of approval of provisional internship permits for newly hired educators.
Thank you. So last month, we brought to you teachers that needed to be placed on a special permit because they don't yet have a preliminary credential or clear credential. So today, we're bringing to you another teacher. So this public notice is in compliance with the provisional internship permit that we request issued by the California Commission on Teacher Credentialing. And it is the district's intent to employ Monica Rixey as a resource specialist teacher at McCaffrey and Valley Oaks, and we are asking for approval.
So I take it she splits her time between those two?
She does, yes.
What's, what's the difference? Is it three and two?
I think Donna has that in her question.
She'll mostly be at McCaffrey Middle School, but we do have a few students at Valley Oaks, because for RSP, the maximum caseload is 28. We currently have 29 students in an RSP at Valley Oaks. So we are working on supporting them, and we're hoping that Monica can assist us with that. It would just be just for a small portion in the morning, is what's planned.
And Monica has been one of our consistent and committed substitute teachers.
Yes.
So it's exciting to see many of our substitute teachers get hired to fill vacancies. So we're excited to have Monica.
Is, is that, is that in the end a special education teacher for RSP? Or is it just?
Yeah, it's special education.
Yeah, special education.
It is.
It's RSP.
Special education, the caseload is smaller at McCaffrey, but we still need an additional teacher.
And that's why she needs to go on the provisional internship, right? Because she needs to go into a special education.
Correct, she doesn't have the preliminary credential at this time. So this is why we put her on a permit.
She will have a mentor teacher or a teacher working with her.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay, then, do I have a motion to approve item two one two point three five three?
I'll make the motion for item two one two point three five three.
Thank you, Casey. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you. I have a motion from Casey Raboy to approve item number two one two three five three, seconded by Tracy Skinner. Thomas Silva.
Aye.
Grace Mossen.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries four zero.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is two one two point three five four, and that is board consideration of approval of side letter of agreement between Gulf Joint Union Elementary School District and Gulf Elementary Faculty Association, GEFA, regarding acceleration blocks.
So we have a side letter, an agreement with GEFA for an extended day or an acceleration block, is what we've been calling it for the last couple of years. After school, it's a program where teachers voluntarily teach a small group of students, six to eight students after school, two days a week. They keep the same students for about four weeks. And then, we have four different week sessions, so different blocks throughout the year. We are going to, if board approves this, we would be paying teachers $80 an hour. And last year, we paid $65 an hour for the acceleration blocks. We did increase that to 80. The funds that we would be using for this, this is one of my typos in here. It's not the Expanded Learning Opportunity Grant, it's learning loss funds that we would use. It is still part of ESAR, it's part of ESAR three funds, but it's the category of learning loss funds, same funds we used last year as well. It is completely voluntary on behalf of teachers if they want to do this. It's two days a week. Some teachers have already started. So we opened it up to, as soon as some teachers said they're ready to start now, they want to go. Some teachers have, I think we probably have maybe five to 10 teachers across the district that have already started. Principals said, each school site, they have about five to eight teachers that say that at some point throughout the year, they will be teaching acceleration blocks. So that could increase. The fiscal impact is a very rough estimate at $100,000. It just really depends on how many teachers end up doing this.
And then, are we getting any kind of feedback to show, you know, data that shows the success of this? Or just the impact that it has, I guess?
We are, teachers are taking attendance. And then, we have attached here some of the, just a brief form, but we do ask teachers to identify the dates, identify specific skills that they're going to target, and then give us some comments of the outcomes of what, how things went for that four-week of targeted support. And then, we can also, our goal this year is to have staff that would end up putting the attendance of students that attended acceleration blocks in synergy, our attendance system, to where we would then be able to run reports on students that attended, like math scores or district reading assessment scores, that type of thing, to see if we saw, what kind of impact we saw for students that attended.
So you could correlate those items?
Yes, that is our, that is our plan.
I think this is fabulous, because I read today that with iReady, 58% in, sorry, science, reading, it's a 58% drop because of learning loss during COVID. And math is 60% with iReady. So I think this is fabulous with these students getting back on track. And again, you know, our college and career-ready entering middle school and high school.
And Gracey, the support is targeted, which is why we see a greater impact. This is not general support, it's specific to certain skills, tied to certain standards for certain children.
That's fabulous. I mean, I was actually shocked when I saw those numbers today. I was like, wow, you know, because I know back when, you know, when we were on distance learning, you know, there was a lot of questions, I asked a lot of questions, parents had a lot of concern. And now the data's coming out, and now we're seeing it. And, you know, I had conversations at the high school level that, and even in what I read today, especially like in math and reading, students are three years behind at their freshman sophomore year, which would make sense, because that was about when, you know, sixth grade going to seventh, with the learning loss. So I think this is great, even at higher price. Even if you can't provide some education.
Maybe support approval recommended, yes.
No, I think this is very, I like the idea that it's targeted support, because then that gives the teacher the actual, the latitude to put the emphasis where they see it's most needed. And I just love the flexibility of that. I think that's, that's an excellent opportunity.
And Tom, may I add, this also applies to our very high achievers who need to also get a boost at that level. So it's not just for children that are struggling with certain skills. It truly is to accelerate all groups of children.
That's an excellent point.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like that.
Yeah, teachers have the flexibility on that. They choose the students, they choose the skills.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense, it really does. Then, do I have a motion to approve item two one two point three five four?
I'll make a motion to approve two one two point three five four.
Thank you, Grace. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Casey.
Thank you. I have a motion from Grace Mossen to approve item number two one two three five four, seconded by Casey Raboy. Thomas Silva.
Aye.
Tracy Skinner.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes four zero.
Next, we're moving on to item two one two point three five five. This is initial public notice from Gulf Joint Union Elementary School District to Gulf Elementary Faculty Association, GEFA, as a public notice slash sunshine.
Informational item only, this is our formal public notice that the district will be in negotiations with our teachers' union, GEFA, reopen articles related, the article related to compensation. And our goal is to retain and attract highly qualified teachers. And so we look forward to a positive negotiations with GEFA.
The next item on the agenda is item number two one two point three five six. This is board consideration of approval of the Gulf Joint Union Elementary School District actuarial study of retiree health liabilities under GASB seven four slash seven five for fiscal year in June 30, 2022. So Nicole, talk to us about OPEV.
I also have Luis here from the company who does our actuarial, but I'll give you a little intro, and then he's got a little PowerPoint for you. So the accounting standards that you just mentioned, GASB seventy four and seventy five, they require that government agencies determine our liability associated with our current retiree health program. And so that the actuarial study that TCS completes helps us determine that amount. And then those entries go into your government-wide financials as part of your financials or in your audit. And so is Luis is here?
He is here, he's actually on the screen right now.
Hi.
This is Luis, he's with TCS, and they prepare our actuarial study each year. You can take it away, Luis.
Great, thank you. Well, good evening, everyone. I'm here to present the benefits, I'm sorry, the results of the last actuarial study that was performed for your fiscal year ending 6/30/2022. Some of the things that we'll discuss today is, you know, what are your current benefits that you're offering? What's really the purpose of the valuation? What are the results? And then, what to look forward to for the following year? So what are the current benefits that you're offering your active employees and your retirees? So your employees, once they reach retirement and they meet the eligibility requirements, they will be eligible for medical, dental and vision. Benefits are paid for the earlier five years or age sixty. The district pays 100% up to, up to a cap, and dependents are covered. So retirees can include their spouses on the plan. And in order to get those benefits, certificated and management employees must retire on or after age 55 with at least 20 years of service. And classified employees must retire on or after age 60 with 20 years of service. So as of the valuation, as of 6/30/2022, there were about 357 employees that, you know, that are included, that once they hit eligibility, you know, the eligibility requirements, and they, including retirement age, they, they're, you know, we are projecting out their benefits. And then the 33 retirees that are currently receiving benefits. And so, again, the purpose, what is the purpose of the valuation? Well, you know, you have these accounting requirements that say that you are providing this retiree health benefit. And in doing so, there is a cost to this benefit that has to be put on the district's balance sheet. So the purpose of this report is to fulfill those accounting and disclosure requirements, but also to really estimate the cost for providing this benefit. And so the way we accomplish that is really by, you know, looking at the, your current active employee group and your retirees, and projecting out what their benefits will be out into the future until you get the last benefit. And that's at the individual level, so we look at that for each active employee and each retiree. And the way we accomplish that is really a multi-step process. The first step is, again, we project out the, you know, the, how much they're going to get every single year in benefits, every active employee and retiree, active employee, assuming they retire. And then, we bring all those, we, we get, we add up all those benefits, and those are the cash flows you see down here. So these expected payments are the next 10 years of benefit payment. So for this coming fiscal year, you're expected to pay around $169,000 in benefits. And by 2031, that's expected to grow to $517,000, again, because you're going to have employees retiring. And so the next step is, you know, we project out for every single year what the district is expected to pay in these retiring benefits. But then we bring it to today's dollars, and the way we do that is through the present value. The next step after that is we calculate the present value, and then we break that present value up into what's already been earned by service through the valuation date. present value up into what's already been earned by service through the valuation date, what's expected to be earned the next year, and then all future years. And so the pie chart that you see below, the total value of that pie chart is eight point six million, and that's including all service. But if you just include your active employees, what the amount of service they've already earned through the valuation, that, that's five point three. And for GASB seventy five, that's the number that matters, that's five point three, which is the green piece of the chart. Your employees are still earning a benefit. Next year, they're going to get one more year of service. They're going to get one year closer to retirement, so they're going to increase the liability by that red slice, which is about three hundred thousand. And then including all future services, that yellow, which is about three million. Now, keep in mind, this is a moving target. You know, we just did a valuation and includes employees as of six thirty twenty twenty two, but we're going to do another full valuation in two years. There's going to be new employees coming in, you're going to have different retirees. So this is a moving target. And then in looking at the results compared to last year, you know, the liability as of last year, as of twenty twenty one was five point eight million. It decreased about five hundred thousand to five point three. So here, we're just giving you some background as to why we expected the, the liability to actually increase about three hundred thousand. The reason for that is, again, we expected your employees to get one more year of service. There's, you know, the, the liability of five point eight is a debt, so it grows with a little bit of interest. But then you also make benefit payments throughout the year. So all those things, we're going to increase the liability about three hundred thousand. But as you've probably heard, interest rates have been going up and we have to look to a twenty year high grade municipal bond rate when, when taking the, you know, the present value of these cash flows and that, that discount rate increased to three point five four. So when the interest rate increases, that lowers your liability because the present value is lower. So that's really the, the big driver was just the increase in the interest rate. And volatility is expected from year to year. You know, this is, again, a moving target, so there's going to be fluctuations. And then looking ahead to next year, twenty twenty three, you know, we just did a, a full valuation where we collected premiums and census rate information. Next year is a roll forward, so we take the numbers from this year and just roll them forward one year. And then you, we expect it again to make the, your retiring payments are expected to be about a hundred and sixty nine thousand. And if we just project out your liability, again, the five point three, we would expect that to be five point six, assuming that the interest rate is still three point five. If that goes up or down, of course, that will affect that number. So, thank you. Any questions?
Anyone have any questions?
I just was curious, and it's actually on the, the agenda item information. It says, we invite the participation of a retiree representative, the district health benefits committee, to monitor and assist in our approach to healthcare benefits. Do you have participation? Does some, do any of our retirees participate in this?
Oh, we do reach out. We currently do not have a particip, a retiree participant, no.
So they're invited?
We reach out.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, I was just curious.
They're retired, they're gone.
We, we did have a retiree on the committee for many years and then she stepped down and then since then, we have not been able to get anybody.
Okay.
Well, thank you very much, Luis.
Thank you.
All right. Then are there any other questions about that? Do I have a motion to approve item two one two point three five six?
I'll make a motion to approve two one two point three five six.
Okay, thank you, Grace. I will second this.
Thank you. I have a motion from Grace Malson to approve item number two one two three five six, seconded by Thomas Silva. Tracy Skinner.
Aye.
Casey Raboy.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes four zero.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is two one two point three five seven, and that is board consideration of approval of the twenty twenty one twenty two unaudited actuals.
So the unaudited actuals are, are the final costs. They don't change after that. So throughout the year, we bring you budget and first interim and second interim and it's all very volatile and it's all very fluid. And so this is kind of, it is what it is and it ended the way it ended type thing. So included in your packet, instead of an MYP, is a similar sheet that you're used to seeing, but it's just the data from unaudited actuals summarized for you on the one page. Everything else behind it is just our standard SACS forms. And so if we look at the, the analysis, it's basically the revenues, how they ended, the expenses, how they ended. You can see that we did have, we ended with net increases instead of decreases. And so that our ending fund balance was the ten point seven million for unrestricted and two point nine million for restricted. So going down to kind of the, the colors that you're used to seeing. And remember, committed balances aren't until next year. So we talked in May and did our commitment, but you will see zero because this is twenty one twenty two. So unrestricted total reserve ended in the twenty two point two six percent for the end of the year. And that's all I really had to report out on that. It's not as robust as the other reporting periods. So if you have any questions, though, I'm happy to answer.
So just out of curiosity, was there anything that surprised you when you, when you ran this final report? Or, so you probably don't get surprised much, do you?
No. Well, during the year, I, I think the, one of the bigger, one of the things that can happen at the end of the year is the fallout in salary and benefits from just not hiring positions. So throughout the year, you're budgeting for these positions and if you can't hire them, you're slowly building up almost a savings because you're not paying someone. And so you can, that's something you can see at the end of the year where, oh, oh, I didn't hire these ten positions, you know, things like that. But other than that, you're monitoring your budget for things like supplies and contracts all year constantly, that there's usually, there's not some big surprise from when you do estimated actuals kind of in May, June, to when you finally close your books till like August. So, yeah.
Excellent job, Nicole.
Thank you. I'm very happy with the reserve.
Any other questions? And I will move to approve item two one two point three five seven. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you. I have a motion from Thomas Silva to approve item number two one two three five seven, seconded by Tracy Skinner. Grace Malson.
Aye.
Casey Raboy.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes four zero.
All right. Next item on the agenda is item two one two point three five eight, board consideration of approval of resolution number three, twenty twenty two twenty three GAN limits. So explain to us, Nicole, what is a GAN limit?
Paul GAN. So in nineteen seventy nine, Paul GAN sponsored. I was a two.
Okay.
In nineteen seventy nine, Paul GAN sponsored Proposition Four. And so what that does is the result of that, it, it's measures to control the growth in government spending at the state and local levels. And so the, what the calculation does is you spend no more than the prior year spending level, plus or minus the adjustment for population and inflation. And so it takes that number, multiplies it by those two factors, this is your new number for the year. And so every year, part of the met, part of the, I keep calling it a met, proposition, and then in ed code now, you have to adopt your resolution every year, saying that you'll basically do that. You won't spend, you'll spend the same, you, you do your revised GAN limit for the current year and then that you will follow the, the law and how you spend next year. So you're doing two years at once with your resolution. So to simplify that, in the SAC software that produces all these reports, there's what's called a GAN form. And so they've taken the overly complicated calculation and it pulls in all your data that you've loaded and it multiplies it by the population factor and the inflation factor and gives you the new number. And as long as that number, that's your appropriation limit, then what it also calculates is what is your appropriation subject to the limit? And what that is, is the revenues that they've defined as being proceeds of taxes. And so if you, what they're making sure you do is you spend at least what you make in revenue from proceeds of taxes, which is like your local revenue, your state aid, things like that. And so if your appropriations limit exceeds what you're getting in revenue, you decrease your appropriation limit. If your appropriation limit, what term did I just say? If your appropriation limit exceeds, I did the exceeds, okay. If your appropriations limit is less than the revenue from proceeds of taxes, you increase it. So they're basically making sure that you're spending at least what you're getting and your, and what they deem revenues from proceeds of taxpayer dollars, basically. And so our, for LEAs, really, usually it's the same number. The LEA is really where they have an adjustment. And when you have an adjustment, all it does is flip flop what the state does. So if you're increasing, they're decreasing. If you're decreasing, they're increasing. And so that is what the three-page calculation does for you. And so for us, it's the same number. We have an adjustment, we don't have an adjustment and so, and it's usually the same number.
How often does it recalculate or recalibrate for inflation?
Every year, so every.
But it's an annual?
Mm-hmm.
So if it, inflation is up and down throughout the year, it just takes a fine, a fixed point on the calendar and as of that date, that inflation rate is, is what's calculated?
Yeah, in ed code, there's a, like the consumer price index factor, it takes from a certain month. And with the population factor, it's, it takes into account your ADA, so your fluctuation in ADA from year to year is the population adjustment.
Okay.
So it's not necessarily community population, it's, it's what's happening in your district.
Student population, okay. Interesting.
And so we just recommend that we adopt the resolution and then we send that on to the county office of education.
All right. Anybody else have any questions? Okay. I'll move to approve item two one two point three five eight. And do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Casey.
Thank you. I have a motion from Thomas Silva to approve item number two one two three five eight, seconded by Casey Raboy. Grace Malson.
Aye.
Tracy Skinner.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes four zero.
Next item on the agenda is two one two point three five nine, and that is board consideration of approval to dispose of surplus vehicle, one each nineteen ninety five Ford F two fifty truck.
Yes, so we have another vehicle. I don't know if anyone remembers, from the spring I bought it, brought another truck. This one's kind of the same. The age of these cars is proving that they're just unable to repair whatever has, has broken and they don't pass smog anymore. And so we kind of have a little small graveyard between us and the high school over at MOT of these poor cars that no one can use. So the high school's got some to surplus as well over there. So this is our last one right now that we need to surplus. So if it, once we, tonight after approval, it'll post, we post the notice and then we use that same online auction. I took pictures and we have a little description and we sold the tech truck. So hopefully, you know, we'll sell this one. You don't get much, but at least somebody gets some use out of it and, you know, we get a little bit.
How long did it take to surplus out the tech?
Not long. I had it posted, I set the, for a month and it was sold within the time before the posting. And it was kind of one of those, you could tell from the name, it was probably one of those kind of like maybe used car, scrapyard type companies. And so, you know, they're looking for, for stuff, for parts and different things. So hopefully same success, we'll see. I'll post that on Monday.
And hopefully we're not having to surplus our warehouse vehicle. Our warehouse vehicle is very old too and it's starting to break down.
And it also has a part that's kind of obsolete. So you may see that in the near future that, that we, we have to purchase.
What kind of vehicle is a warehouse used now? Is it like a?
It's a, it's, it's a, it's a moving, kind of like a moving truck, a small moving truck.
Yeah.
Small U-Haul, mid-sized U-Haul, but it's probably, oh gosh, it's at least nineties too, probably.
Oh, I'm sure, I'm sure. And it's got, you know, the, well, so we'll need certain things on it, but.
Yeah.
When you get like thirty plus years old, it gets hard.
And we're getting there on, on some things. So it's, it's just ti, it's become time to do things like that, so.
We call those vehicles vintage.
Mine's getting there, it's almost twenty years old, I realize today.
Yeah.
I need for a vehicle.
Yes, vintage. Are you going to look to replace this, so these like vehicles that are, that we need of, that we're going to have to purchase?
Not, not this one. This one, actually, we replaced this one. I believe this one is the old, I think it might be the old grounds, it is the old grounds truck and we replaced that this year. Actually, there was kind of two that were really bad and we bought one, so.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, do I have a motion to approve item two one two point three five nine?
I'll make a motion to approve two one two point three five nine.
Thank you, Grace. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you. I have a motion from Grace Malson to approve item number two one two three five nine, seconded by Tracy Skinner. Thomas Silva.
Aye.
Casey Raboy.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes four zero.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is item two one two point three six zero, and that is board consideration of approval of the twenty twenty two twenty three consolidated application.
Okay. The consolidated application or CONAP, as we called it, call it, is used by the California Department of Education to distribute the categorical funds, mostly what's our federal funds from the federal government, our titles, our title one, two, three and four. And in your packet, what I, what it did is that usually this comes out in May, but because of COVID for the last couple of years, they've been late releasing it. So this was just released until August and Nicole and Fiscal Services, you know, worked to pull this together. In the winter, the winter release was back in January. So what happens is, is this is the application for the new year that's included, that's the, the one that we have. But we usually don't get our new entitlements until around January in the winter release. So when you were looking through the packet, you'll see that some were for twenty two, twenty three, new school year, that's the application. But I also wanted, I usually add the, the actual entitlements, the entitlements from the last school year, so that you kind of get an idea on what we've spent. And then Nicole, correct me if I'm wrong, but what we will also see then by January will be our carryover, if there was any carryover from this last year, in this coming January, we'll, we will see our new apportionment?
New apportionment and we, we did calculate carryover already for the allocation we're aware of, because they, they do, they can come back and change your prior year allocation, which changes what you thought you had left to spend. So, yes, we'll get, we will know if they made any more adjustments. Yes, it's, it's quite like a three-year process almost because they, they do three fiscal years all the time. And so they've, they've snuck things, you know, you're, you think it's this and then you pull up the next release and you're like, what? It's like a different number. So they're, they're always constantly adjusting for probably like a two to three year span.
And then with the carryover that schools have, go back into the fund and then they're redistributed. And all of the funds are distributed, we're district-wide, title one district, so all of our schools qualify for funds, but they don't, are not divided equally, they're divided in accordance to the free and reduced lunch population for the students at each school. So for example, Valley Oaks, a school that has about eighty five percent free and reduced lunch, would have more, more funding than, for example, say, Marengo Ranch, which has, I believe, a little less than forty percent. So I added at the bottom, I, you know, from last year, I, I added the apportionment, the funding that we receive for each one. I just wanted to, just as a reminder, the Title I, that's to improve academic achievement. Our instructional assistance that we talk about that support instruction come from Title I. And then also a lot of the school's resources come from Title I. And Title II, to prepare, train, and recruit high-quality teachers and principals. This is a lot of our professional development. Sometimes we also supplement, maybe not, I'm thinking, the last couple of years, but for example, TOSSIS, our teachers on special assignments. Or for example, our academic conferences that they hold each trimester to look at student performance. Title III is specific. It's for English language learners, and it's kind of above and beyond services, its resources. We also fund some of our bilingual instructional assistance from that funding. And then Title IV, which is relatively new, the last four or five years, there's different parts to it. There's the first part, which is the well-rounded education. There's the second part of Title IV, which is school safety and social emotional learning, and then technology. But our social workers are funded from here. Our school resource officer is funded. And then some of our technology is funded, as well as any other type of professional learning for our teachers. But asking for approval for the application for this new year.
Anybody have any questions about the application?
No.
No?
Well, I just wish that the Title IV, it seems like the funding should be a little higher. When you just saved off like the councilors and the school resource officers and all that.
It's only a reasonable amount.
And I'm just like looking at that, I'm like, wow. But, no, okay.
For our school resource officer, do we pay only fifty percent still?
Because we share about, do we share? Yeah, it's about fifty percent.
But yeah, with this amount, it is only just as a portion of these. Does help, but-
It just seems like it would be a little more when you just saved off all the Title IV money goes to.
I know. It's a portion.
Yes, portion of all these things.
But our schools really depend on their Title I, especially for those instructional assistants. And our schools with the higher population of free and reduced lunch, of course, they have more instructional assistance than the schools that don't have the same percentage, which is the way it should be.
Yeah, that makes sense. Okay. And do I have a motion to approve item 212.360?
I'll make the motion to approve 212.360.
Thank you, Tracy. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Casey.
Thank you. I have a motion from Tracy Skinner to approve item number 212360, seconded by Casey Raboy. Thomas Silva?
Aye.
Grace Mallson?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries four zero.
The next agenda item is 212.361. Board consideration of approval of memorandum of understanding, an MOU, between the California School Employees Association and its Gulf Chapter number 362, CSEA, and the Gulf Joint Union Elementary School District regarding the creation of the purchasing technician position.
Well, Tom, I'll apologize in advance for the very long agenda item name for the next four.
But it's accurate.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
So there was some review of job descriptions of, we had a purchasing clerk, curriculum clerk, DO clerk, all these different job descriptions. And we really needed to hone in on what the actual position was doing. And so we, in doing that and working with CSEA, a new position was created for a purchasing technician. It kind of took all the bits and pieces and made it into a cohesive job and position that it was. But we just, wasn't defined, I guess you could say. And so we worked through the job description to get that updated. And then we also conducted a parity salary study and compared it to similar districts to see where we would fall by having this position. And so what's attached is the MOU, the job description, and the proposed salary schedule, which is range AA on the CSEA classified salary schedule. The fiscal impact from where we are now to where we would be with the new position is about fifty-two hundred dollars. And that's paid for through LCFF with our, you know, in our district office staff. And so we're right, it's still pending ratification from CSEA, and so we're asking for board approval.
I just wanted to clarify that it's a new classification. It's a new job description, but it's not actually adding an additional employee. There's someone that's already currently classified as a clerk two, that's doing lots of different things. And Nicole looked at different job descriptions. And we feel that this position, what she has been doing as a district clerk two, it really fits more as a purchasing technician. And so it's not adding another employee.
Yes, clarify that.
So then it eliminates the clerk two position?
Yes, we're not, it just closes that position for now. If we ever needed to, we still, of course, have district clerk twos, have job descriptions for that. If we ever ended up needing another district clerk two, we would hire and fill that. But it is a little bit of a salary increase, because this purchasing technician, it would be paid at a little higher rate based on the duties. But it's not adding an extra position.
And we're actually paying this person to do what they're doing anyway.
Yes.
So it's, it's, yeah, that makes sense. Anybody else have any questions on that? Then do I have a motion to approve item 212.361?
I'll make a motion for 212.361.
Thank you, Casey. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you. I have a motion from Casey Raboy to approve item number 212361, seconded by Tracy Skinner. Thomas Silva?
Aye.
Grace Mallson?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries four zero.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is item 212.362. And that is board consideration of approval of memorandum of understanding between the California School Employees Association and its Gulf Chapter number 362, CSEA, and the GCUESD regarding signing bonuses for Harper School classified positions. Only one breath.
Yes. You did, that was good. That just rolled up. So as we know, a lot of districts are experiencing staffing. Oh, this is you.
No, Grace, Grace, you can't, no. Go for it. Sorry. I'm sorry. No, go for it.
So a lot of districts are experiencing staffing shortages as well as us. And there are positions that are very hard to fill, either due to competition or just lack of sheer amounts of people that you may need. And so this year, we are offering a thousand-dollar signing bonus after the completion of your six-month probation period for instructional assistance in each of the categories. We have regular, expanded learning, special ed, bilingual, preschool, and such. And then school social workers are also very, it's a very competitive position as well, and everyone needs them as well.
Currently have an opening.
Currently have an opening. And so a five-thousand-dollar signing bonus upon hiring is what we're advertising for. And this one, fiscal impact, obviously for IAs, is based on how many employees we actually can hire and how many pass their six-month probation.
I might add that, you know, the signing bonus, especially for instructional assistance, most of these positions are three hours and forty-five minutes. And it's really difficult to find employees that want to work less than four hours a day. You know that expanded learning is six hours, and we do have some special education, but it's just been difficult just for a school like Fairsite. We've had, I think we started the year with seven vacancies, which we need to have because of ratios and compliance. But a lot of it's due to the part-time nature of the job.
Okay.
It used to fall to a lot of parents that wanted to be available for their kids.
I was just going to say that, Casey.
We have been hiring parents. We have been. It's been really great when you're in an interview with their parent at your school site. It is, it's neat.
And they tend to stay until their kids move on, but that happens.
Yeah.
Exactly. So, no, we are hiring parents, but hopefully this will be a little bit more of an incentive.
Well, let's hope so.
Yeah.
Then is there any other discussion on this item? Do I have a motion to approve item 212.362?
I'll make a motion to approve 212.362.
Thank you, Grace. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Casey.
Thank you. I have a motion from Grace Mallson to approve item number 212362, seconded by Casey Raboy. Thomas Silva?
Aye.
Tracy Skinner?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries four zero.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is 212.363. And that is board consideration of approval of memorandum of understanding between the California School Employees Association and its Gulf Chapter number 362, CSEA, and the Gulf Joint Union Elementary School District regarding a salary range increase for bus drivers and the dispatcher.
So we recently have been talking about this over the last many meetings. So we all know that there's a statewide, nationwide shortage of bus drivers. We need to provide the transportation to our students. We need to remain competitive in the region and retain our employees when everyone needs them, and we do too. And so we did a salary parity. We did this one with similar districts as well as regional districts on some of these positions where we are trying, they're not rare, but they're, you know, they're such a shortage that we want to make sure we're competitive regionally as well as similar-sized districts, where we normally just do similar-sized districts when it's other positions. And so we, in that, it was determined that increases were warranted to stay competitive regionally as well. And so we're proposing that bus drivers move to range Y and the dispatcher to AA. What this will also do, and this is in the MOU, is that all bus drivers will now be at range Y. And so before we had brought to you, to ensure our special ed routes were covered at the beginning of the year because we had driver shortages, we put special ed drivers on a range above regular. So now this range is above both of those, and all bus drivers would be on the same range. Because we're elementary, we have one position open, but we have our routes are fully staffed right now. So we have enough drivers for each of our routes, whereas that was an uncertainty when we brought that previous proposal. We had, we had a contracted driver at that time. And so we didn't have all of our employees. And so the fiscal impact is approximately twenty-six thousand dollars. And this is, we pay for the additional through the supplemental concentration, and there are also the LCFF transportation add-on. I will also mention that we've talked about in the presentations that how this year's budget, if we do the transportation plan and bring it to board by April first, the state is now going to start reimbursing transportation costs, which is something, you know, has been pretty much unheard of. And so that will also help this. We don't know what that looks like right now. And so as it develops throughout the year, that'll also help in covering transportation costs.
So any questions on this one? No, we need bus drivers, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a given. Okay. So nothing to discuss there. Now, you know, I'll go ahead and move to approve item 212.363. And do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you. I have a motion from Thomas Silva to approve item number 212363, seconded by Tracy Skinner. Grace Mallson?
Aye.
Casey Raboy?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries four zero.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is item 212.364. That is board consideration of approval of memorandum of understanding between the California School Employees Association and its Gulf Chapter number 362, the CSEA, and the Gulf Joint Union Elementary School District regarding an increase to the warehouse worker position hours.
So we have one warehouse worker position. And with the expansion of Fairsite and expanded learning program and the overall, kind of the needs of the district, the position is currently five hours, but often works over that. And so it finally got to the point where we decided that the position just needed to be increased to eight hours. It was obvious the work was there because they were staying seven, eight hours every day. And so the needs have just increased in the district. And so we're proposing to increase it to an eight-hour position. The cost is approximately nineteen thousand dollars. And this position is paid for from LCFF. And these are all still pending ratification from CSEA.
This position used to be eight hours. For many, many years, we reduced it to five hours about two years ago when our current warehouse worker retired. At that time, it was, really, it was looking at the workload and for fiscal responsibility as well. Budget was tighter then, and we had a vacancy. And so we thought it was time to see if we could manage with a five-hour position versus an eight. And so now we're at the point, we're just purchasing more curriculum, Chromebooks. I mean, somebody has to deliver all of this. COVID testing kits.
Air filters.
Air filters, PPE. You know, thankfully, that has slowed down, although we've still provided if needed. So it's just, it's a lot. And it's expanded learning. Thankfully, we have those funds, but there's a lot that we're purchasing. There's weeks you go out there and it looks like Christmas exploded. Cases of Legos. I mean, you name it. You hardly can walk back there. And you have to, the warehouse worker has to check all of that in, has to inventory it, and then has to deliver it. And so we wanted to make sure that our current warehouse worker that's in the position do not want to lose him, that he was okay with taking an increase in hours. And so he's at the point now where he said yes. If it was offered, he would take it, or position. So we think it's-
This is just one percent.
It's just one percent. We only have one percent for the whole district. They do the mail run. They deliver all supplies custodial. I mean, whatever.
Pick up broken tables.
Pick up broken tables.
Take them to the dumpster.
There's still lots of people five hours.
It's a lot. A school needs to borrow chairs. You go pick up the chairs, take it to another school.
It's like a strimblower.
Yes.
That's funding.
Yeah.
And I'm just thinking, just, you know, people that work in retail that does inventory, there's like a crew. And it's always on a bigger scale, but that's a lot for one percent in five hours.
Our purchasing clerk, or purchasing technician helps with a little bit of the inventory in her new position, but it's mainly, it's mainly him. Yeah, just one.
Okay. So then, do I have a motion to approve item 212.364?
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve 212.364.
Thank you, Grace. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Casey.
Thank you. I have a motion from Grace Mallson to approve item number 212364, seconded by Casey Raboy. Thomas Silva?
Aye.
Tracy Skinner?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries four zero.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is a public notice. And this is agenda item 212.365. This is the initial public notice from Gulf Joint Union Elementary School District to California School Employees Association, Gulf Chapter number 362, CSEA. Public notice, and this is a sunshine.
Yes, so informational item only serves as our public notice with our classified union, CSEA, that we will go into negotiations to reopen the article related to compensation. And just like our teachers, we want to attract and retain highly qualified classified employees as well. Takes a team of everyone, all of our employees. We look forward to positive negotiations with CSEA. And with this public notice, I did add, I just wanted to remind the board and the public that this is in addition to the two articles that we sunshineed last- And with this public notice, I did add, I just wanted to remind the board and the public that this is in addition to the two articles that we sunshine last month. We plan to also negotiate with CSEA the article related to transfers and the food service vacancy procedures. And we sunshine that last month. So this is in, compensation is in addition. And so this will be, this will be our proposal for this fiscal year for CSEA.
Okay. Anybody else have anything to say about that? Questions, comments? Then we can move on to item two one two point three six six. And this is the first reading of board policies, administrative regulations, bylaws, and exhibits.
So this is a team approach. We have a lot of board policies and ARs and even exhibits for you this month. First reading for all of these items. So I think what we will do is each department will just kind of go down and highlight some of the changes for you and see what questions you might have.
We'll start with Ed Services, the Williams Uniform Complaint Procedures. It's just, it's a, it's pretty small update, but it's important. And this update basically is, it's talking, it's dealing within the, I can see it in the exhibit. It's the Williams Uniform Complaint that we look at every, you know, that we look at quarterly. It includes textbooks, but it includes teacher vacancy or misassignments. But it also includes facilities. So the update is in the area of facilities. Specifically is that any school that serves students in grade six through twelve at all times stock and make available and accessible free of cost and adequate supply of menstrual products in specified restrooms, beginning with the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year. So that's been added to the Williams Uniform Complaint in the facilities portion. And then you will see under the exhibit, it just added, you know, for the exhibit, it just added the form, the Williams Complaint Form. It added that to it. And also, we also required, and if someone does require, does file a complaint, it's anonymous, but they can ask for resolution. And in that case, we would need to mail them the outcome of it. So that's taken care of in the, in the Williams Uniform Complaint, that update. The second one was the education for foster youth. I think that probably the important part here is that it also now requires foster or foster youth. We need to have a district liaison for foster youth. And been working with our social workers, so Sophie Lore used to be our homeless and foster youth liaison. And now she is not in the district. And so working with our social workers to have another liaison. Liaison is really the point person for keeping track of and making sure that our foster youth are being served. This, in our district right now, we, I looked it up before I came, we have just five foster youth now. But we do need to make sure, and CalPads, Christine in our department runs a report monthly because it's really important that we know who our foster youth is. So that's kind of the update there. And the last one is immunizations. And I added this one because it was referenced in the education for foster youth. But I thought it was important because it was last updated in two thousand eleven. So much has changed in immunization laws since then, that I thought it was really important. There used to be so many different, and when you have a chance to look at this for next time, there were so many different exemptions. Parents could file exemptions if it was contrary to their beliefs or religious beliefs. And so much has changed that I felt that we really needed to have an updated regulation for immunizations. So that's why we included that one. So that you look that over and then you can come back with questions, or Tom?
Yeah, I just have a question about item number seven, when it's listing the different required immunizations. Because this seems kind of like a catchall here. It says any other disease deemed appropriate by CBTH.
There you go.
Yeah, and this is the language.
You caught that one.
This was suggested by.
I caught that one when I.
By CSBA?
Yeah, yeah, and that was, yep, two thousand twenty. So that was, you know, no, that was nineteen twenty. It was updated twelve, so that was kind of right there in COVID, wasn't it, that winter?
Yeah, I'm just curious about the legality of them, you know, deeming appropriate versus it becoming an actual requirement.
And, you know, I haven't heard anymore. I think that that's kind of died down in, you know, in California now. But the possibility of the requirement for the COVID vaccination, I think that would fall under this, that area. But we haven't heard, Lois.
No.
Like they're even moving on with that.
Yeah, like you said, it's pretty quiet. No, no talk on that. And they've reduced requirements now even for weekly testing for employees that are not vaccinated. We no longer have to ask employees if they're vaccinated and things like that. So some big changes there.
So do we want to consider at least rewording item number seven?
The board, yes, you can choose to do that. You can get a.
Donna, that language is the same in our old policy.
This one was? Okay, thank you for putting that out. I mean, I have, the old policy has been just quite afterwards. Yes, it is the same. Thank you.
Well, we see here, because this one says any other disease designated by the CBTH. So I understand if they designate it, they've gone through.
Oh, designated is different. It's deemed appropriate.
I get that. I just am not okay with something being deemed appropriate. Because I think that's too much latitude.
It has to be in the head code though, for them to require it. That takes legislation.
So that's why, so wouldn't designated be a more accurate term then? Or are you saying that it doesn't, it's irrelevant because?
I think it's irrelevant because unless it's, unless it's in legislation, it's not a requirement.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's a good point. That's why the COVID vaccine never, was not mandated because it didn't pass through legislation.
Right, they could deem it appropriate without it ever hitting, becoming a requirement.
It's not until it's, and then it depends on how they vote for it. Because if they allow.
Why wouldn't we say?
Anything required, who votes? And the more specific you are, the better, which is less room for interpretation.
It'd have to be required by the Department, California Department of the.
Yes, we only.
We only require what's, what's there.
So do we want to change that language to designated?
Yeah, I don't like that. The way it's worded, I think it's kind of.
It just seems too open-ended for me.
Yeah.
And I think, you know, even though maybe that's not the intent, I just am more comfortable with the way that it was stated previously. I think designated is pretty clear. If it's designated, it's designated. And at that point, you understand what it is.
Yeah, versus deemed appropriate.
Yeah.
We could do that. We can make that edit. We could.
Oh, absolutely.
We could move to, with the next meeting, bring it to you with everything else as is on the new policy, but revert back to that old language.
Yeah, just change item seven to the previous language.
We could do that.
It's got, a lot of it is this really important updated information. But something that hasn't changed is that if a child has, with an IEP, although they are due required to have current vaccinations, you can't exclude them
Can't exclude them.
From any special education services. So therefore, they can't, you must allow them to continue participating. Also, which came up with a student that just moved into the state, if a student moves from out of state, a lot of times it's difficult to get their record, their immunization records in time, or if they have exclusion, if they have exemptions, they have thirty days from moving into the state to get those. Another really important one is just.
Thirty day grace period, that's to start the protocol, right? You don't have thirty days to get like all the shots?
No, it's thirty days to, yeah, to show, because the other thing, it's to show and to get your paperwork and get everything from your, from the last school. But also, if you're not up to date on your, on your immunizations, it does also state in here that when you go to the medical doctor, if you get a doctor's, you'll get a physician's note with a schedule of vaccinations. Because you can't get them all at one time if you're behind.
Well, it's not my series.
Right, so it's a series, so they can, as long as you have that doctor's note, that doctor can start this series. And then that would override.
In that case, the child would not be excluded.
Homeless students, you must enroll them within twenty-four hours. They're not, you must enroll them without their immunizations. The only exclusion to that would be if they're coming in for the first time out of this country. So an immigrant new to California would need to have, and start with a vaccination series. And we work really closely.
Did they require like TB skin tests if they're out of country or anything like that?
You know, they're required for, there's a physical and the doctor, the doctor, there's a, it's a TB screener. And if they come from out of the country, the doctor's probably not going to pass through that TB screener because they're from out of country. So they will need a TB test also. And that's something that, that our health department and our community outreach assistants, they do a lot of work helping families and paying for it in some cases, getting families that are, of course, our immigrant families, getting them the immunizations they need. So, but that's why that would, that's why this one was included. There's just so many updates. And we will bring it back next month with at least that one change. And if there's other changes that we need to make or you have questions about, it doesn't have to be approved at the second reading. We can also, we could bring it back with other suggestions.
So now on the business services?
Yes.
Electronic signatures.
So the. The first, the first one for three one one zero, the transfer of funds. We're just wanting to delete this policy because it was only for temporary transfers between funds for the school years, the school years twenty twenty-one and twenty-one, twenty-two. So it's not, it's not necessary to keep it now that its purpose is over.
This was a response to COVID or something?
The transfer of, from funds, yeah, it's to make sure that your, each of your funds in the county treasurer stays solvent. And so you could transfer from, say, your general fund to your cafeteria fund or so on and so forth, so. And so that's, that's all this one was, was just recommending to just delete the administrative rag that pertained to that specifically. And then I'm just waiting for a vote or something to start talking again. Sorry. I'm sorry. My brain is slowing down. So there's a, there's a board policy, the CSBA board policy and administrative regulation for electronic signature. So before you, there are certain things that are allowed to have an electronic signature. This became really popular during COVID for independent study master agreements. That's what we used them for when I worked for the county was in order to gain parent's signature and things like that. But you have to have policies in place to say this is what you're going to do. And then you decide what you're going to use it for. And so we went almost full electronic on certain things like our new hire package. We made, you know, W fours and everything was an electronic signature through Adobe Sign. And so, and some of you are probably familiar in your personal life with DocuSign and things like that. You sign documents for your house or things like that. It's the same criteria. So it's basically establishing the legality of being able to use electronic signature on certain things. And you can use different platforms like Adobe Sign, like DocuSign. There are many platforms out there that you can buy, purchase, to use for certain things. And so it streamlines some things. You just decide as a district individually what it might help you with. There's also, if you have, say, you have a form that everybody in the district signs annually. And so a privacy policy or something, right? And so you can send that out via email and say, please sign your privacy policy for this year instead of everyone, you know, handing it into their principal or something. And so it's just, once you have the board policies in place, you're able to move forward if that's something that you wanted to do.
Well, no, I was going to ask which platform you guys work, because I, because I've worked with Adobe Pro and I've worked with DocuSign and really, they're both great. So I didn't know you had picked one or the other depending on the documents or if you even had to. Or it just kind of leaves it open-ended where, you know, some documents, which could be like contractors with the construction, the DocuSign, because that's easier as a package versus.
More commercial.
Yeah, versus like handing out things to, emailing things up to staff through PDF.
Yes. And we actually met with Adobe, a men-coordinated meeting, kind of with HR and business and just, and COI. And just, what would you use this for? And this is how it works and things like that. And so having these policies in place will allow us to kind of, you know, sit down and decide if this is something that would be useful to go forward with, but we'll have the policies in place.
We're probably a little behind in that area. We need to kind of get up to speed on the technology of electronic signature.
And it's the cost benefit of the need, because it's not free. And so you pay for the software, you pay for the signatures, there's a transactional fee as well. And so it's, does it benefit? Does it save time and things like that? And so definitely want to keep that in mind instead of just, you know, signatures for all and, you know, you're paying per signature type thing, so.
Well, what, how much is the cost for doing the paper, the handing in the paper? And then, you know, you have to hold on to the paper for so long somewhere, and then you have to dispose of it after so long, so.
Yeah, right.
You know.
It's a lot of, it's a lot of backend work when you're establishing electronic type things. Because then you're right, you are storing them electronically. Where do you store them? Do you get a scanning software? Do you store them on the server? You know, because these are documents, like you said, you potentially need to hold on forever, personnel files, things like that. So definitely a major overhaul if you're going to do this on a grand scale. The rest of these policies are related to food and nutrition. And the reason there are so many that have so many changes is because of AB one thirty that we've talked about over the last year with the universal meals and providing two free meals to any student regardless of whether they're free and reduced or not. And so every policy pertaining to food and nutrition had to be updated. It had to be updated to say that. It had to be updated. The sections where you're charging for meals or you're collecting payment, you know, all these little sections of all of these different board policies needed little tweaks for, for things. If you're no longer, you're no longer maybe collecting fees from students, so that whole part got wiped out. It, just different things like that. It also, there were a few, a few things that was just clarifying. Like we, even though we're, we still want to, because, you know, LCFF still defines free and reduced for funding. You still are an unduplicated pupil. You may need it defined for, I wrote it down, for targeted services that you may need and things like that. And so the delineation of free, reduced, and paid hasn't gone away in every facet of what we do. It's just that now we are providing meals to everyone, to meals, free of charge. Who asks? Who requests?
So then based on that, are we seeing a decrease in the number of applications for the free and reduced lunches?
No, actually, because we have stressed the importance for LCFF funding. We still have to get them. They're not the official. When Nick, our nutrition supervisor, did a fabulous job of whatever, you know, getting us on CEP and getting, making sure that everybody was, you know, on the right program. And so some, some sites are collecting like alternative income forms. And then we have one site that had to actually do the official application. But we stressed in D-LAC and DAC, and he made flyers. And we talked about it a lot to parents and staff about how important it still was to get those applications in for our LCFF funding. We did not want to see that. We did not want to see that, you know, tank or go down or drastically be affected, because people thought, oh, well, I don't, we don't need those, why are we doing this? We don't need to put that, you know, send that in or things like that. So we, we did make sure to kind of put that out there in every kind of corner that we could. And Nick said that it's, and he gives free ice cream, you know, if you, if you turn it in, so, you know. So he's been happy.
We didn't get free ice cream tonight.
We'll invite Nick next time to the board meeting, you guys get ice cream.
Next time, yeah, next time he does a presentation.
I will, I will make, I will let him know.
Absolutely.
So he's been very pleased with the, the turnaround of the return of applications.
Did more kids start eating more of the free lunch when they stopped having to pay for it? I just have curiosity.
I would have to check with Nick.
I think a good presentation.
Maybe Nick can come on, or next time. It is about time to see Nick again.
Oh, I think middle school's eating a lot of pizza lately. My sister-in-law has a pizza.
I think he did his presentation.
They serve pizza four days a week now in middle school.
We'll have Nick do a little update on. Beginning of the year update.
My daughter, for the first time, is finally starting to eat.
We can do that.
Especially breakfast, yeah. That would be.
We'll, we'll add him to the next meeting.
If he's listening out there.
I'm sure he, he might be on.
He's saying he was going to be online.
He's usually, he's usually on. He's, he is.
So that covers business services then, right? And we had curriculum?
So the new policy basically allows us, or gives us flexibility when we can't find teachers that are fully credentialed. In the past, teachers needed to have or pass the basic skills proficiency. The new policy allows us to use different ways in which a teacher can prove their basic skills proficiency, such as coursework. If they've taken certain courses, then those count towards this, towards certification. And this policy also gives us the order in which we should try to fill vacancies. So we start with those that are intern-ready or in an internship program. If we can't find any teachers, then we go down to teachers with a provisional internship permit, which is what I have brought to you past two months. And then the last one is, we can also then go to teachers or individuals that have been granted a credential waiver by CTC. So we're doing a lot of this already. Our current policy talks about no child left behind. That hasn't been in place for a while. So these, this draft reflects all the new language. And again, the, the main thing is that it provides districts with more flexibility to fill vacancies that we can't yet fill with a fully credentialed teacher.
That was definitely due for an update. Very good.
So for facilities inspection, the biggest change here that I would like to highlight is the fact that now with the new law, we are required to provide free menstrual products in bathrooms in grades six through twelve. And so since, of course, we have sixth grade at the elementary school, that meant that we needed to put menstrual products in the intermediate girls' bathroom, and we have done that. In addition with this, at, at the middle school, we have them in all of the girls' bathrooms at the elementary, just in the intermediate bathroom. And then in addition with this, also, we are required for one school, oh, sorry, one school, one bathroom on campus, a, a boys' bathroom, to have menstrual products as well. And so that is with this new law. And so what we have done in all of the schools, the bathroom that we chose, we thought it would be, I guess, maybe the most supervision and things like that. We chose the boys' bathroom in the multipurpose room. That's where that's, that's located. So that was the, the biggest change with that. The complaints, the policy related to complaints. This is, we, we wanted to update this to align with our complaints concerning district employees as well, that we brought to the board a couple of months ago. The biggest change here with this updated policy, there's a right to appeal to the board, but the board has the choice. So if a complaint has not been satisfactorily resolved at step three at the district level, the complaint may file a written appeal to the board, and then the board has the choice. You, you have the right to choose whether or not you are going to hear the complaint or not. And so that mirrors the complaint concerning district employees as well, and it is recommended, this appeal to the board having the right to choose is recommended CSBA policy. Highlight I wanted to change there, highlight there. Conflict of interest, what's new here, the, we do not currently have an exhibit for the conflict of interest. Now, it is recommended that we have one, and what that exhibit does is it highlights the positions in our district that would be required to annually, annually follow, annually file the statement of economic interest, the Form seven hundred. So we have various positions, including our board trustees, that annually have to complete that form. And so we, we would like to add the exhibit. That is new for us. And then last but not least, animals at school. This has come up a lot, questions from board members, from some staff, even some parents. It is more popular these days to bring our, our fur babies, our dogs to school. And so I was asked to see what CSBA recommends in this policy. It is recommended that the animal, not just dogs, but an animal, this policy is related to any animal at school, that there has to be an instructional purpose for bringing the animal. There has to be prior approval by the principal or the designee, and parents have to be given the right, they have to be notified that the animal is on campus, where the animal will be. The parent has the right to verify whether there's any allergies or any health conditions, or any aggravation that might be triggered with the student with the animal in the classroom or on campus. And so we have to make sure if, so for one, there has to be an instructional purpose that's approved by the principal, and then we have to notify parents. And if for any reason, you know, parents are not approving of that animal on campus, we should not approve it. Those are the updated policies. We struck out the menstrual laws.
Everybody okay with that? Comments?
I do want to ask a clarifying question, and this is just maybe to reduce the amount of questions we might get from parents or the public in regards to the menstrual products.
Yes.
I can understand women's bathroom, I can understand all gender. However, I would like clarification, not so much for myself, but for the public, as to why one men's restroom.
You know, would it help what we could do maybe next time to attach with this is the new law? The language, it's strictly following the law. It says that you have to have, identify one men's restroom on campus if you have sixth through twelfth grade. And so a lot of sixth graders are in the middle school, and so you're, you know, you're not dealing with this at elementary. We've had, had a couple of parents ask, and we've sent them, you know, we've attached the ed code. But that's what we can, we can, we'll attach it as just background information, the ed code with that for next month, that it's not, it wasn't a district decision to do that. We're, we're following, following that, that law came into effect, I think, January one of this year.
July first.
July first.
I just see us getting a few questions, and, you know, and the new law wasn't attached, and.
The ed code, yeah, we'll do that.
Yeah, and part of the requirement, is that a notice with the ed code and a, a district contact if it needs to be resupplied? So on each, next to each dispenser, we had a little plaque kind of made, and it's required, like when those are talking about the inspections, they're going to, like, Dania on your, on your fit report, if you don't now have those. And so we ordered little signs to go next to each of them that has the whole ed code on it, and then a, a district contact for if they're empty, so they can be supplied, restocked if someone noticed and they was empty.
No, thank you for that clarification, and I think attaching it over, you know, the discussion.
Sure, we'll do that.
Just for the public.
Yes, I, I agree.
Educational purposes.
Okay, now we'll move on to item G. Are there any requests for public comments for topics not on the agenda?
No, there are no requests for public comment at this time.
Thank you, Kawhi. Item H then is pending agenda items, school district properties. Is there anything else that, besides having Nick come and talk to us about food?
And bring ice cream.
And bring ice cream.
We're gonna tell him to bring some food samples. He gets samples, he gets samples from vendors all the time. We're gonna tell him to bring something.
They are vendettin.
Great idea.
Oh, great idea.
Is there anything else, any, any other suggestions for, for agenda items? Any other considerations? No?
No, but I do want to bring up, I was approached by a teacher at Valley Oaks in regards to a flea issue. Has this been, oh, yeah, brought up, oh, hey.
We have been dealing with fleas at Valley Oaks for probably two years. We've used three different pest control companies. We've had the whole campus, all of the field, all of the blacktop. We've had that sprayed on the weekends numerous times. It, it is very, the experts say they cannot believe that the fleas are actually living on the blacktop. We thought it was cats for a while, we boarded up some portables where we thought cats were going under. We spray weekly in the classrooms. You know, we've tried different vendors, because we thought, okay, maybe somebody has something, a product that, you know, our current vendor is not using. Didn't really see a change much there. It is just, it is really the craziest thing.
It stumps them when they come.
Is there carpeting?
Yeah, there's carpet.
Is there a way to not have carpet?
Well, it's not, it's the outside, what stumps them is the fact that they're not supposed to stay alive on the blacktop, there's, you fall off the host, you die.
Do we have anybody like from UC Davis?
I, I looked it up the other day, I almost, I'm at the point of calling the entomology department at UC Davis and telling them that we're a school district, we have this issue we can't solve. And so I was just home there the other day, because I, we don't, you know, you could continue to call pest control companies and.
That's not their area, because they're all about mosquitoes.
Yes, so really, it's a plea to the curiosity of the research team at UC Davis.
I'm sure there's some grad student that wants to write a paper on it.
So my plan is to. So that's my plan, is I, I'm, I have it on my to-do list to send an email this week and just kind of tell them our situation, because it, no one's, they, we don't seem to get a solution.
But it's the exterior.
It's the exterior. It, you, there's times that, I was at Valley this week, and thankfully, I didn't see any fleas on the blacktop, and I was out on the blacktop for a very, pretty long time, about thirty minutes or so, and I didn't see any. But there'll be times that, I mean, you'll stand on the blacktop and you'll look down and you'll see a flea jump off from the blacktop onto your shoe. And so what the exterminator tells us is that, that when we track, when we track an end of the classroom, once they hit the carpet, they are dying, because what they spray in the classroom kills it. But we're tracking an end from the outside. And the times that it's been reported that higher, I guess, volume of, of fleas and things like that have been times when there were a lot of, one time it was pretty heavy when everyone was out on the lawn, out in the field for a fire drill. And they brought him back into the classroom. It's definitely, they're definitely living outside. It's not like there's an infestation of them in the classroom. They, staff and the exterminator maintenance, the, and I, even students will say that it's, they're bringing them in from outside.
I'm wondering if it's not from maybe the outlying houses, if they're doing work, like on their fences or backyards and disrupting something.
They should not be able to. I know, we even did, I can't say, I have a, yes, diatomaceous earth. We've done that a few times, because we thought, okay, we thought it, it was coming from feral cats behind. Couple of years ago, it first started by the, the back row of portables, the four portable in the very back, and it is backed up to some fences and some houses, and staff had reported seeing some cats back there. And so it was recommended we put this earth back there and kill it, and we've done that a few times. I think maybe that helped for a little bit, but it wasn't, it was, I don't know, two, three weeks later, reports of them. It is, I don't know how, and it'll be a hundred and ten degrees, and they will be alive on the blacktop.
And the blacktop's probably another hundred degrees hotter than.
Oh, yeah, it'll burn a pet's foot.
Yeah.
If you, you couldn't walk your dog.
But not a flea.
Well, then please, please add this to the superintendent's report. There's health and safety, just keep us advised of progress we're making.
We will. Never any ticks to fleas.
Never heard of any ticks.
Interesting.
No.
Okay.
Because there are different types of fleas.
I don't know, maybe somebody from UC Davis or somebody can catch the fleas and tell us what it is. I, I don't know.
Because they actually have like a hotline you can call to identify a bug. It's like, you need to bug identify, call this number, and it's like, no, I, I need you to come make these bugs go away.
But they do, they are.
I know.
I mean, they are different.
Sure, it could be a different breed, it could be a mutation, it could be, you know, all kinds of things.
Maybe we'll, you could, they could write a really good paper on that and have a solution.
Yeah, so that, that was, that's something I want to accomplish this week, was that email. I did get on their website and poke around yesterday, so.
Let us know how that is next month.
Yeah, and just when you, just when you think they're gone, you're like, okay, gosh, I haven't heard anything for two weeks. This is awesome. You hear something, you're like, oh, no, I thought they were dead. Yeah, well, thank you for that.
Well, if there's nothing else, then we will adjourn this meeting. Thank you very much.